At this time, I would like to call the February 1st, 2022 meeting of the Stanley County Board of Education to order. Welcome to all of you that are here in attendance and to those joining us via live streaming. We appreciate you being here. At this time, I would like to call on Mr. Anthony Graves for our invocation and our pledge of allegiance to the flag.
Please bow. Heavenly Father, we come here tonight. Is this mic on, by the way? Oh, the mics aren't working. Heavenly Father, we come here tonight and we ask you to watch over us, lead, guide, and direct us as we're making decisions that impact not only the school system, including the staff, and the students, and the faculty, and the parents, but also Stanley County as a whole. Lord, we understand the responsibility that we have, and we hope that all the decisions that we make will be right in your eyes. And we ask for your blessings in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Just a quick announcement. Our mics are not working, so the sound's not working. TVs aren't working. So, don't have screens up here either. So, anyway, we will try our best to use our teacher voice. Right, Mr. Sorensen?
Not a problem.
Teacher voice. At this time, board members, I would like to entertain a motion to go into closed session.
I'm making a motion to go into closed session.
A motion by Ms. Poplin, a second by Ms. Watson. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. Okay, we are in closed session. This time, I would like to call the board back into open session. Once again, welcome to all of you that are in attendance and to those of you that may be joining in via live streaming. We appreciate you being here with us tonight. You may have noticed that Dr. Dennis, our board members, our county office staff, we are all decked out in our orange and black colors in honor and recognition of one of Stanley County's own, Mr. BJ Hill, defensive tackle for the Cincinnati Bengals. I think we are all Bengal fans, and we are ecstatic that BJ and the Bengals are going to the Super Bowl on Sunday, February 13th. Just a little, and some of you at the back may want to add a little bit more here, but BJ attended Oakboro School and West Stanley High School. He then went on to play for NC State. BJ was drafted by the New York Giants in 2018, and he is now playing for the Cincinnati Bengals. To BJ, his family, friends, teachers, administrators, everyone, we want you to know that Stanley County Schools is so, so proud. We are so proud of BJ Hill. So, those of you who are in the back, who are here supporting BJ, let's have some fun. Will you join us down at the bottom? And we're gonna do our cheer. We are thrilled. We are thrilled. Look at you. You are. Are you ready? You gonna help me? Yes, you are. Hey. All right. You gonna lead us?
Oh, yeah. Here, do you need this? Do you need this?
Yes, we do. Hey, everybody from supporters of BJ Hill. We are thrilled. We are thrilled. Here we go, board members. Okay? Ms. McClendon. I am throwing down the gauntlet, okay? From the Stanley County School Board to West Stanley High School to see if they can out cheer us. You're staying with me. Here we're gonna go. Tell Bobby, get over here.
Y'all got too many papers.
Our school board, our school board will start out with the first line. We'll hear supporters in West Stanley with the second line. The third line, we all chant together, and then we all know what the final answer's gonna be. Nobody. Are you ready, school board? I have my teacher voice. You ready to help me? Okay, here we go. Who day? Who day? Who day think of beating Bengals? Who day? Who day? Who day think of beating Bengals? Everybody. Who day? Who day? Who day think of beating Bengals? Nobody. We love it. We love it. Ms. Carla Poplin had the sign made, so you are welcome, Ms. Hill, to take our sign and put it up wherever, in school, wherever you want to put it up. We are thrilled.
We are too, thank you.
Would y'all like to say a few words about BJ once we go back out there? Is someone who'd like to say a few things?
I would just like to say, I'm BJ's aunt, and I drive a school bus for Stanley County Schools.
Yay.
And I get up at 3:45 every morning, people. So, we would like for school to be closed the Monday after. That's all I have to say.
Everybody, everybody to come over here.
I'd like to say something before you do that, if you don't mind. Like I said, we thank you guys for recognizing BJ. You didn't have to do that, but you did. And once again, West Stanley High School and Stanley County, we really do appreciate you guys. And once again, Stanley County, we're gonna show out. This is big. I don't know if you guys realize just how big this is. So, we need orange ribbons on your doors. We need orange ribbons on your mailbox. And young man here, he has some signs. We're doing T-shirts. Come around, and our little class at school, they're gonna represent. We need all you guys to get your mama a T-shirt, your daddy a T-shirt, but most definitely, each and every one of you, you guys, show us that support by getting a T-shirt. $10, you can't beat it. One of the best, you know, T-shirts you could ever get. Because like I said, we have one of the best principals at West Stanley High School, so we asking all of you that can, you know, we challenge you. Ms. Card, I challenge you to put that orange in your house. Okay? North Stanley, South Stanley, not Albor Mar, senior high, we want you guys to put that orange on, because right now, it's not a West Stanley thing, it's not a BJ thing, it's a Stanley County thing. Do that. Get those shirts. Board, you want to see all of them in a shirt. Don't we, Ms. McClendon?
Yes.
There you go.
It's 15 if you want to give to the cause.
There you go.
Okay.
I want to take a picture of everybody, but I want to. Can you do me a huge favor? Because you are so beautiful. Will you hold that sign for me? And everybody stand over here so we can see everybody's face.
One, two, three. Good job. Thank you. That was the most fun. Board members, at this time, I would like to amend the agenda to place our board member comments before the consent agenda, the public comments, before the consent agenda, and to add a calendar resolution right up before the 2022 North Carolina School Board Legislative Committee. Do you see that? If you will put the calendar resolution there, and then, again, that we can add public comments before the consent agenda. So, could I just have a motion to approve then the amendments?
I make a motion to approve the amendments.
Okay, a motion by Mr. Leiskin, a second by Ms. Poplin and Mr. Sorensen. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. Motion has carried. At this time, next on the agenda are our recognitions for the month. I'm gonna turn this over, Dr. Dennis, to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. It is CTE Month in February, and we have some of our awesome CTE teachers here. I'm gonna turn this over to Mandy Melton. She has some things she would like to say.
Good evening, members of the board. Like Dr. Dennis said, February is National Career and Technical Education Month. We have some of our CTE teachers with us here tonight, and I'd like to ask them to come forward.
The mission of career and technical education is to empower all students to be successful citizens, workers, and leaders in a global economy. CTE gives purpose to learning by emphasizing real-world skills and practical knowledge. Programs in career and technical education are designed to contribute to the broad educational achievement of students, including putting into practice practical skills such as reading, writing, and mathematics, as well as their abilities to work independently as part of a team, think creatively, solve problems, and utilize technology. These tools and experiences make school more relevant and ensure students are ready for the real world. Whether students plan to further their education in community colleges, technical schools, four-year universities, or colleges, receive on-the-job training, or pursue careers in the military, CTE is the first step in a pathway toward productive employment and citizenship. I would like to share with you a few highlights of our program. Workplace credentials are an important focus in CTE. Students have the opportunity to leave high school with an industry-recognized credential showing that they are college and career-ready. Last school year, CTE students, with the help of this staff, earned 2,032 workplace credentials. And this fall, the number of credentials earned is already at 1,688. Another focus of CTE is internships, advanced studies, and apprenticeships, which help connect students with on-the-job experience. Last school year, 54 students participated in these opportunities, and 48 students have also completed internships and advanced studies programs this fall. Career and technical education student associations have not been able to function as normal the past few years because of COVID, but we are proud that all four of our high schools currently have a Skills USA and National Technical Honor Society chapters. Three of our high schools also have very active FFA chapters. These associations are under the leadership of these teachers. Also, we are very proud that our teachers are leaders in the state. Many of these teachers before you tonight have served on committees that have helped to develop statewide assessments and curriculums. Normally, these teachers like to step back and showcase their students, but not tonight. I would like to recognize these teachers and the impact they have on our students. Tonight, I introduce to you our CTE department, 30 high school teachers, three middle schools teachers, two career development coordinators, and one curriculum and instruction management coordinator. Thank you all for what you do.
Thank you, guys.
Can we get them all together? Like if you can squish in, and we'll get one big group picture made with you.
Squish in like we're here.
Yes, squish in this way. We might need to do a couple of rows, but. No, we're good, but we just have to, you know, look and smile, look and smile. Okay, everybody, one, two, three. Beautiful, beautiful. Thank you. Yep. Thank you.
Ms. Melton, for all of your CTE teachers, whether they're high school, middle, curriculum coach, everything, we appreciate all you do. And some of these folks, I believe, maybe were a part of feeding us tonight. That was amazing. Who fixed the chicken?
Was it him? Kitty helped, kitty loved.
Wow. And the potatoes.
That's Caroline.
Yes. Well, wait, I ain't got to the salad.
That's Sharon Huggins salad.
Yes. And then Dr. Dennis is dying up here. Who fixed the cake?
Tanya was here. Tanya, look, she just walked in.
Thank you all so much for feeding us. That was wonderful, and thanks for all that you do. We appreciate you all. In accordance with Policy 2310, public participation at board meetings each month. Part of at least one regularly scheduled board meeting will be set aside for citizens to address the board through public comment. Each speaker will receive three minutes to present their comments. I'm just gonna ask you, please, there's four people. If you will, please just try to adhere to that three-minute time limit. The first person is Joshua Ballinger. Mr. Ballinger, I'm not sure if that mic's working or not, so you might have to.
I'll speak loud enough.
Okay. I think you've been in the military. I believe you can.
I'll use my command voice. Okay. Can people hear me on the live feed? Just make sure, I hope that mic check didn't take away from my time. But good evening, members of the board. My name's Joshua Ballinger. I live here in Albemarle. I come before you tonight to address the lack of substitute teachers. It is not a secret that the whole state is in desperate search for qualified individuals to be substitute teachers. There are several factors that are impacting the availability of certified teachers in our schools right now, the biggest two being COVID-19, putting more and more teachers out for an extended period due to quarantine requirements that forced through the implementation of the NC Toolkit, and the great resignation of teachers from their positions. The problem that is evidently serious with whole grade levels being placed out of school due to the lack of availability is not being taken seriously. The resources that are levied to this issue are petty at best. I have applied to be a substitute teacher. I have always wanted to try teaching. I'm retired and I'm a college graduate, have some instruction experience when I was teaching the military decision-making process in the Mission Command Training Program while I was in the military. So, I figured I would look into it to see if I could be of help. I was contacted by ESS to attend a hiring session about the position. I called the recruiter back to speak to her directly, as I like to obtain pertinent information about any position before I agreed to attend a prolonged briefing about it. I was informed that the starting pay is $80 a day, $10 an hour. I was also told that I would have to pay for my own background check and schedule a doctor's appointment for a medical screening, again, something that I'd have to pay for. That's an awful lot of expense to attain a job that pays $10 an hour. I asked where that rate comes from, and was told the county. The county sets that rate. I have not looked into every avenue of approach that the monies that the county has received for COVID-19 have been spent, but I'd be very surprised that there was no means in which the county could have offered more of an incentive than $10 an hour to pay those individuals that are in charge at a very increased rate right now of our children's daily education. I want to put that into perspective for everybody. A 16-year-old student that if I was a substitute teacher that I could be teaching gets off school and heads to their job at McDonald's. Their starting pay right now, on average, is $12 an hour at McDonald's. I pull up, and I see said student, and think to myself, they're making more money to salt my fries right now than I'm being paid to provide their education. Maybe we should investigate how Wake County did this with their COVID money and see how they were able to raise the pay of uncertified substitute teachers, being moved from $80 a day to $103 a day, and certified subs being moved from $103 a day to $120 a day. With this pay increase, at least substitute teachers will be making the same as their students. This matter, I believe, needs addressing immediately, and I would appreciate any assistance in doing so. So, that was my prepared remarks, but I watched your guys' meeting back there on YouTube. These are my additional remarks. Listening to tonight's work session and hearing phrases like "we are playing a game" is disheartening at best. The business, that's y'all's words, that you discussed is dealing with my children, and I would appreciate a less cavalier approach and attitude from those responsible for their education. Thank you.
I actually wrote this down before I watched your meeting at 4 o'clock, and I'm even more passionate about it now. So, just bear with me. There's solid evidence here, and I hope you guys have an open mind. So, I want to start off with a few questions. When is the endgame? When will courage override fear? Is it fear of state? Is it fear of man? I ask because all I see is compliance. We have gone from masking to nonstop testing, testing so our kids can just receive an education. Non-symptomatic kids are being used as guinea pigs so they aren't sent home, all for a virus that studies show do not affect our children. So, I ask again, when is the endgame? When will we stop complying so our kids can grow in a stable atmosphere? I once again ask that Stanley County link arms with Union County. They are making great strides to free themselves from this madness. Union County School Board, along with their county commissioners and health director, have chosen to do what is best for their citizens, and that is to look tyranny in the eye and say, "no more." And they are doing this. I talked with the chair, I talked with the vice chair, and they are doing this, and they are having a meeting tonight. And I encourage all of you to go on and watch them and see exactly what they are doing, because what they are doing is saying, "no more" to tyranny. And you will find a group of courageous individuals that are saying, "no more." And I hope, I hope, I hope that you guys will do the same thing.
Our next speaker is Mr. Jason Phibbs.
Two weeks ago, the county commissioners unanimously approved a budget addendum that allocated 164,000 in federal funds to the local health department for the following. Quote, "Identify community vaccination partners, for example pediatricians, pharmacies, occupational health settings, schools, and other physicians' offices, to combine efforts and implement strategies to vaccinate all eligible populations with a focus on providing vaccines to eligible children and adolescents under 18 years of age and on providing COVID-19 boosters. Efforts and strategies are to include family-friendly events, school-based vaccination, and ensure equitable access," end quote. A few school board meetings ago, Dr. Dennis verbally pledged to Mr. Graves there would be no promotion of vaccine clinics by Stanley County Schools or use of school facilities for vaccine clinics without board approval. However, in light of this updated direction and additional funding for the local health department to target the vaccination of children in partnership with community entities like the schools, I believe now is the right time to put Dr. Dennis's pledge in writing. Therefore, I ask the board to draft and pass a resolution which includes something akin to the following. One acknowledges that performing or providing medical services is not a core function or responsibility of Stanley County Schools. Number two acknowledges that children are at almost no risk of death from COVID-19 and therefore have no need of the vaccine. Acknowledges that Dr. Fauci in his New York Times November 12 interview admitted that COVID-19 vaccine will not prevent infection or transmission of the virus, nor will it prevent serious injury, hospitalization, or death any longer. Acknowledges the long-term effects of the vaccine, while most impactful to children, are still unknown. Acknowledges the vaccine is under emergency use authorization for those under 16, meaning it is still a medical experiment. Acknowledges the only FDA-approved vaccine, which is called Culminardi, is not available in the United States, meaning you cannot get an FDA-approved vaccine in the United States. Therefore, no Stanley County Schools' property, facility, or personnel acting in their official school capacity shall be used for a COVID-19 vaccine clinic. And also, Stanley County Schools shall not promote or advertise via any personnel or resources the COVID-19 vaccine or vaccine clinics. There is not a child on the planet that should have that toxic spike protein injected into their system, and I pray that we would do anything to stop it.
Thank you, Mr. Phibbs. Our next person is Heather Carlson.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Board, and Dr. Dennis. My name is Heather Carlson.
My name is Heather Carlson. I live in Locust, and I currently have three children enrolled in SCS. I first wanted to sincerely thank you for allowing me to speak tonight, and also thank you for continuing mask optional, and with continuing this open communication within the community. It is well-received, so thank you. After attending last month's BOE meeting, there was one question I had regarding the implementation of the Test to Stay program. I know that we were supposed to direct all questions and email to Dr. Dennis, however, this is more of a rhetorical question. My question is, what and how does this board plan to keep kids in school after the study concludes? I fully understand the intentions to participate in this program from the board, in that this may not be the perfect solution to keeping healthy kids in school, but at least it is an option. However, as a mom, I have to look past this moment and say, hasn't 57 COVID tests since March of 2020 between three kids been enough? Isn't 17 quarantines in the same timeframe between three kids enough? Isn't this Test to Stay solution like putting a Band-Aid on a wound that needs stitches? Please don't misunderstand. I am pleased this board is acting on strategies to keep our kids in school, but I pray daily that we also get to the point of realization and say enough is enough. Lastly, I know some of you are probably thinking, I just don't have a clue, about all the rules, laws, and regulations that this school board must follow, and I will tell you that you are correct. I have never been on a board member, on a school board and a board member, and I do not know all the rules and regulations. However, there is one thing I do know, and that is the history of our great nation. I think sometimes we take for granted the importance of our history, so we do not repeat it. For example, Martin Luther King Jr. did not become the leader of the American Civil Rights Movement by issuing Band-Aids or saying, "This is the best I can do." No, his achievements and accomplishments occurred from continuously breaking these laws and regulations that were in place at that time. Remember, he was arrested over 20 times for everything from praying to protesting and to refusing to leave a department store after being denied service. With that being said, I close. With laws and regulation, what laws and regulations are you willing to break for the sake of Stanley County's children and well-being?
Thank you, Ms. Carlson. Next up is the consent agenda. Each of you have had the opportunity to read over the minutes from the January 4, 2022 work session, the January 4, 2022 regular meeting, and the January 11, 2022 work session. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, please?
I make a motion, we approve the consent agenda for the work session, regular meeting, and the second work session.
I have a motion by Ms. Poplin, a second. Second by Ms. Watson. All in favor, please say aye. Oppose, no. The consent agenda's been approved. Next on the agenda are our committee reports. I'm going to call on Dr. Rufus Lefler first with Facilities.
On January 8, the Facilities Committee met to discuss projects for the Needs-Based Public School Capital Fund grant. At this time, we are looking at requesting money for additions and roof replacements. We plan to meet again this month to finalize the list. What this is, Mr. Todd Bowers, he came to our committee meeting and he presented it to us. The status per usual gave out $375 million, and they said we could do these things, but they only gave us six weeks to get our proposals going. So he's working on it, and we're going to meet again in the next week and try to get some renovations and some repairs and such on our building. So we're working on it, and we're planning on the Facilities meeting. We've kind of fallen behind over the last probably 10 to 20 years. We need to get on it because most of our schools are 100 years old, and some of them are overcrowded, and we're going to have to make far-reaching plans in five or 10 years to kind of see where we need to be. But with Mr. Bowers' help, I think we'll make good progress on it. So that's where we stand on the Facilities meeting.
Thank you, Dr. Lefler. Sounds like that was very informative. Next, I have Finance, Mr. Dustin List.
We have an action required, I think.
Oh, I have an action required on that one. Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Mike, before, submit a motion first and then move forward to try to secure those grant motions.
Oh, okay. So I need a motion for the board to move forward to procure the monies, to move forward. That's been outlined here by the Facilities Committee.
I make a motion that the board move forward in procuring the monies for the grants outlined in the proposal.
Okay. A motion by Ms. Poplin. Could I have a second? Second by Ms. Watson. All in favor, please say aye. Oppose, no. The motion carries. Next is Mr. Dustin List with Finance.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple of things. And with the budget, since the state finally passed a budget in November of last year, this board had not adopted a budget, had been working off one from prior years. So there hasn't been any changes. We're just going to formally approve that. Mr. Dudley will go into some detail, can answer any questions. The second was on substitute pay increase. We met yesterday as a committee, the board, I'm sorry, the committee has approved to raise the substitute pay for licensed substitute teachers to $137 and for unlicensed to $106.50. We will need to send that to the Policy Committee to update for, so that Stanley County Schools will cover the cost of that and to update the five-day rule.
That's for personal leave.
Yeah, yeah, for the personal leave. And that's it from the Finance Committee.
Okay, thank you, Mr. List. Next up will be Instructional Program, Mr. Bill Sorensen.
As we met last week to discuss our pandemic accreditation process and we go through, and because of COVID-19 based on viking out of years' worth of data, we got a chance to look at preliminary test scores from DPI. The state's not going to be able to do a lot of things that normally do, but I think it's more than noteworthy that during the ridiculously time, the ridiculously struggling times, Stanley County Schools need state average for growth in every breaking category. That's important, but what I want you to understand is it's easy for decent workers to build a house on a sunny day, but I think it's a really, really good job that they're building a house during the storm and still making better progress than they have, is all I'm pointing out. My hat's off to them.
Thank you, Mr. Sorensen. Our hats are off to them as well. Mr. Graves, marketing, community engagement, and safety.
Just a quick announcement on that. I'm going to be meeting with a couple of the individuals in the central office. That will be part of a regular series of meetings, both on the community and safety. So when we're ready to start having some public meetings for the committee, which all the committee meetings are public, but specifically about this, it'll be posted on the website, so please keep your eyes peeled for those meetings coming up.
Thank you, Mr. Graves. Personnel, Ms. Watson.
I report at this time.
Thank you. Policy, Ms. Poplin.
Yes, we did meet this month, and I do have a long list of policies here to be tabled for 30 days, so if you guys will just bear with me, I'll go ahead and get those out to everybody. New policy 6,000, support services. New policy 6,200, goals of school nutrition services. Policy 6,210, organization of school nutrition services. Policy 6,220, operation of school nutrition services. Policy 6,220-R, performance child-based nutrition incentive. Policy 6,225, free and reduced-price meal services. 6,230, school meal and competitive food standards. 6,300, goals of student transportation services. 6,305, safety in student transportation services. New policy 6,306, school bus idling. New policy 6,306-R, school bus idling procedures. New policy 6,310, organization of student transportation services. 6,315, drivers. 6,320, use of student transportation services. 6,321, bus routes. 6,322, student assignment to buses. 6,325, parking areas for students. New policy 6,330, insurance for student transportation service. 6,340, transportation service vehicle contracts. 6,500, goals of equipment. 6,510, organization of equipment, materials, and supplies services. 6,520, use of equipment, materials, and supplies. 6,521, personal use of equipment, materials, and supplies. 6,522, use of equipment, materials, and supplies by non-school groups. Policy 6,524, network security. New policy 6,525, instructional material services. New policy 6,530, resource conservation. 6,540, hazardous materials. 6,550 vandalism. 6,560, disposal of surplus property. 2,330, board meeting agenda, and 5,210, distribution and display of non-school material are all to be tabled for 30 days.
Is there any action on?
Yeah, I just need a motion.
Just all of these to be tabled? Okay.
I can. Um, yes. Do you want me to say?
Okay, thank you, Ms. Poplin. Superintendent Report, Dr. Dennis.
Yeah, the board had asked me to pull this out of consent to give a more thorough report, especially since we had a lot of activity prior to the MLK holiday, and we went over a lot of this in the work session, so I'll be concise. We did have a big spike over the holiday, or prior to the holiday, excuse me, and we had to put schools into remote learning. There was a lot of stress on staff, especially covering classes, and stress on students, and stress on families, especially those who have to help find childcare when you close a school. Now currently, after we took that time apart, coming back, the numbers are going down, which is a good sign, and we hope they keep going down as well. But we did have impacts during that time on the instructional program as follows: lost learning and consistency instructional time, and a lot of issues with our testing and accountability, because we were testing at the time as well and trying to get those tests in. Our teacher absences are up. We looked at the spike last year as compared to this year. They're up, I'd say 40-some percent. I don't have the exact number, but they're up from 253 to 406 during that same span, this same span from the 24th to the 31st. And like was mentioned earlier, we do have a very low subfield rate. Our subfield rate at this time last year was 100%. Our subfield rate now is about 58%. So there were a lot of issues and there were a lot of stress. First of all, I do want to thank my teachers and the staff, and we want to thank our bus drivers, everyone, custodians, certified and classified, for pitching in when there were a lot of absences during this time. And absences just weren't occurring during the school. We had a lot coming from home, and I'm sure everyone knew it was just, it was a very busy week that week as far as COVID. So moving forward, we can't, and I think my staff and I all agree, we can't keep going down that path anymore. And if we get to a spike or we get to where we're having all these teachers trying to sub in because we don't have subs and we don't have staff, and we have classes missing half of their kids, we have an issue. So as we discussed in the work session, we're going to have to look at mitigating factors. We do have a mitigating factor with the Test to Stay that's currently in place, and I was asked for the numbers on the Test to Stay, and it's only been in place for one full week, and we did start out, you know, moving it in one piece at a time with just the staff and athletes. So, let me get my thing here. So from the first week, we did have two athletic teams and one staff member eligible to participate, excuse me. Nearly 100% participated in the Test to Stay. There were no positive cases reported after the series was completed, but it was an intense amount of work to execute. However, moving forward, we do have EMTs that are helping us, and they've been a tremendous help, and I appreciate those EMTs for, you know, filling in the calendar and picking up time to help us with this. So the process is working pretty good so far. The onboarding takes a little time because it is online, but once it's onboarded one time, we don't have to do it again. It's just a one-time thing. The rate of participation as far as the general population wasn't quite as high as the athletes. It was still high, I think it was in the 80s percentile. I'll give you those exact numbers later. And the positive cases detected through the first round was, we did, excuse me, we detected some positive cases of asymptomatic during the first round, but most of the people who were in the Test to Stay were able to stay in school as far as learning. But I will keep the board appraised of our numbers, and if our numbers keep going up, we'll have to have further conversations about mitigating efforts, because there is no substitute for in-person learning, and we do need our kids in school. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Dennis. Board members, I know that we had a very productive work session, I felt. I really appreciated, I appreciated your discussions, I appreciated hearing your comments, all of you, and I want to say that to you. Thank you very much, and thank you, Dr. Dennis. Dr. Amy Blake Lewis, your presentation. I know Ms. Beverly Pennington may not be here, but we thank you for the work that you put into with our work session and explanation and all. And again, board members, thank you for your discussions. With that being said, I would like to entertain a motion on our mask mandate.
I would like to make a motion to keep the mask mandate optional as it has been in the past.
I have a motion by Ms. Poplin to keep our mask optional mandate in place. Do I have a second? I have a second from Mr. Graves. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. That motion has carried. Next on the agenda is the school calendar. I will turn this over to you, Dr. Dennis.
Yeah, I'm sorry we can't project this all, but you have copies of the school calendar for the traditional and for the...
Yes.
Excuse me, the early colleges. And we ran a calendar committee, we got feedback from the staff on how they liked the calendar. Now, having said that, calendar law does really limit what you can really do at this juncture, and we'll talk about that more in a minute. So there wasn't a lot of things we could do besides move some different workdays and things like that, especially since it's going to be such a late start this year. But we made a couple adjustments since the last time, they were minor adjustments. Dr. Con, I think we just tweaked some workdays or something like that, right?
Workday marks.
So does the board have any questions on the current calendar?
The current calendar, board members, you see that you have the 2022-23 traditional calendar and you have the 2022-23 early college calendar, and you've had time to look over that. This does require action tonight, so I would need a motion to approve both the traditional and the early college calendar.
Motion to approve both calendars, Madam Chair.
A motion by Mr. List. Can I have a second? A second by Ms. Watson. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. The calendars have been approved. Okay, we amended this, Dr. Dennis, so I wanted you to speak about the calendar resolution.
I'll speak briefly now, just read the resolution. But one thing, I was talking about how late the calendar starts. There's a lot of issues with calendar law as it's applied, especially to our high school kids, with them having to take exams two weeks after a Christmas break, them not being able to align their schedules with the community college schedule, because we have a lot of kids who like to take CCP classes, those community college classes, and there's a bunch- And there's a bunch of different impacts ever since they changed the law, and I think the impetus for first change in law back in 2004 was tourism at the coast, which doesn't really affect Stanley County that much. But there have been several school districts that have some flexibility, some of it due to being restart school districts or different flexibilities applied for a while ago, but I think it's starting to come back around, and school districts are looking at the calendar law and how it hurts kids, it does not help kids. So I'll just read this into record and answer any questions. So this is the Stanley County Schools' Resolution to Move the Start Day of the 2022-2023 School Year, whereas in 2004, the North Carolina General Assembly set a mandatory start and end date for school districts statewide. Whereas the calendar law mandates the school start date no earlier than the Monday closest to August 26, and the end date no later than Friday closest to June 11. Whereas due to calendar law, the 2022-2023 school year would not start until August 29, the latest possible start date. Whereas the start date has a significant impact on students, families, and employees, including the following: High school students will take first semester exams after the winter break, which negatively impacts their test scores. The late start increases the difference between the school calendar and a community college calendar, making it impossible for high school students to graduate at the end of first semester to enroll in college courses in January, because college courses start before high school courses complete final exams. The late start decreases the flexibility built into the calendar, scheduling makeup days is extremely challenging, increasing the likelihood of using unpopular days like spring break and Saturdays being used for makeup days. And COVID-19 isolation and exclusion protocols adopted by the state has forced a temporary closure of schools, and additional flexibility is needed to make up for lost instructional time. Whereas allowing schools to start the 2022-2023 school year two weeks earlier will provide flexibility and reduce the impact the late start has on students, families, and employees. Whereas the last two years has demonstrated an obvious need for local boards of education to have flexibility in managing their own calendar. Whereas local control over establishing school calendars is an integral component of school system supervision, and administrative powers and local boards of education should retain this authority. Now therefore be it resolved that the Stanley County Schools' Board of Education requires the General Assembly to amend the calendar law for the 2022-2023 school year by allowing boards of education to start schools no later than August 15, 2022. Be it further resolved that the Stanley County Board of Education supports an amendment to current calendar law providing local school boards more flexibility in the start and end of school calendar.
I want to say thank you, Dr. Dennis, for taking the initiative for Stanley County Schools to put out, at least one of our first school systems, to put out this resolution to our calendar in the state. I know that there's a couple teachers out there in the audience. I know one who, a former person on the board. And I know that we talked and talked and talked about wanting to get our, the calendar resolution, where we get these exams in before that first semester is over. And I know you may not have a copy out in the audience, but you know, the calendar as of right now, students will not start back to school the first day till August the 29th. And between all the, everything that all of you have talked about, everything that we're so worried about and with student loss, I know I personally am so in favor of this resolution and moving this up two weeks and being able to get these, the exams in. I just want to commend Dr. Dennis for going ahead and doing this. And I would even like to ask that we have, I don't know if you've had that meeting with our commissioners, our, Mr. Wayne Sasser?
I've had a meeting.
Okay, I think that our legislators, I think people, we need to meet with our local legislators and let them know just how important this resolution is, because this impacts your child's learning, and we need to be able to start that earlier. I know it's a resolution. I know it's a piece of paper, but thank you, Dr. Dennis. Other Board members, do you have any comments that you want to make on the resolution at hand?
I would just like to say, as a parent and friends that have high schoolers, I know that getting those exams in before Christmas has always been a crucial problem or issue. And as soon as calendar came up, that was one of the first things I asked, calendar committee, are we going to be able to get those in? I was like, no. So to kind of put this pressure on, I think is a good idea, and I do appreciate Dr. Dennis getting that lined up for us so that we could get that sent out. Thank you.
Ms. Poplin. Mr. Graves?
I wanted to add just a quick note here. As you noted in the resolution, because of the way that the calendar is set up, students who graduate in the fall semester, I don't know if you heard this, the community college starts their spring semester before the students take their final exams. So what the practical consequence of this is, is that you're creating a gap for those students who would normally enter community college, many of whom would be entering community college to take technical programs, certification programs, HVAC, a lot of the programs that are continuation of the CTE courses that they take in high school. And I'm only pointing this out because it is a perfect example of the hypocrisy in the state of North Carolina, when they say that they care about the students, and they care about the future economic viability of the students, your children, and that they want to see North Carolina prosper as a state economically and attract businesses here. You don't attract businesses without having an educated workforce. So if you want another example of how the state of North Carolina talks out of both sides of its mouth, this is a good one. And I would encourage you to contact your representatives and tell them that this is a practical way that they can actually do something to improve not only your educational system, that they're constitutionally obligated to do, but also to help our state economically. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Graves. I could tell that you did not have an opinion one way or the other. Thank you. Next up, oh, okay, okay. I need a motion then to approve the calendar resolution.
I make a motion to approve the resolution.
A second motion?
A motion by Mr. Graves, a second by Ms. Poplin. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. This has carried. Thank you again, Dr. Dennis. Next up on the agenda is the 2022 North Carolina School Board Association Legislative Committee. The North Carolina School Boards Association Board of Directors invites each local school board to nominate one of its members to serve on the North Carolina School Board Association's Legislative Committee. This individual should be nominated by mid-March through a vote of the full board taken in open session. The Legislative Committee's primary task is to develop the draft of the North Carolina School Board Association's legislative agenda for consideration and adoption by the delegate assembly. The committee is comprised of a subset of the North Carolina School Board Association and at-large applicants representing the eight education districts. The at-large members are selected by the North Carolina School Board Association President. Remember, the North Carolina School Board Association legislative agenda is your legislative agenda, and this process provides an opportunity for the large membership to become more directly involved. It is critical that your board's nominee is able to attend the following, so pay close attention whoever might be nominated. You must attend Friday, July 22, 2022, from 11 to 12 in person. The committee will review the prior agenda and develop the survey for the upcoming two-year agenda. Monday, September 12, 2022, 11 to 3, is required in person. The committee will discuss and analyze your survey results and begin to create the draft agenda. And Thursday, October 6, 2022, 3 to 4:30, is going to be virtual. The committee will review, approve the draft of the 2023-2024 North Carolina School Board Association legislative agenda. The two in-person meetings will be held at the North Carolina School Board Association Office Building in Raleigh, and North Carolina School Board Association will reimburse your mileage to Raleigh and back. I know that once we have a nominee up here on the board, that I will turn all of this over to Ms. Hope Miller, and she kind of takes it from there. I would like to say that it was an honor that I served a couple times on this, and I truly, I truly enjoyed it, and it was, it was quite informative, and it was very informative to sit and listen to other directors as you really are looking at the movement of the legislative agenda, and really how they try to get some things accomplished. So at this time, Board members, I would like to open the floor up for a nominee.
I nominate Ms. Carla Poplin.
Okay, Ms. Carla Poplin has been nominated. If I don't hear any others, can I ask that the nominations be closed?
I know that we've closed nominations.
Okay, nominations are closed, so congratulations. Well, I guess we can vote, but all in favor, say aye. All opposed, no. Congratulations, Ms. Carla Poplin, and you will truly enjoy this. I know you will. And you will represent Stanley County well. Curriculum and Instruction is up next on the agenda. Dr. Amy Blake Lewis.
I do not have any new items to share with the board, only if you have something that you would like for me to address this evening.
I think we are good, and I know you're working hard on accreditation and everything, and I know you'll be working with us at our next work session. So everyone up here, Board members, I know that Dr. Amy Blake Lewis will be working with us coming up before our next board meeting. Thank you for all you do and your team. We appreciate everything. Next on the agenda is Auxiliary Services. Mr. Dudney.
Good evening again. Our Finance Committee met yesterday afternoon to discuss our budget for this current school year. As Mr. Lisk said earlier, it was late November, right before the holidays, then that the state approved a budget. And there was actually some delay in releasing it to the, to the school system, because there were some line items that had to have corrective action. So it was actually mid-December, right before Christmas holidays, that we got any kind of finalization from the state at where we stood of a state budget. So at this, at that point in time, I was unable to bring a budget to the board in December that was relevant, including a state budget. So tonight, I will present to the full board what was presented to the Finance Committee yesterday. So in your packet, you do have the budget resolution. It's roughly five pages. And the first page, in Sections 1 and 2, exhibits your state funds, and how that will, how that is budgeted to us from the state, and how we actually be spending it by program, 5,000, 6,000, and 7,000. You'll see the totals there. The total state public school fund expense budget is $59,655,620. Section 2 is the revenue portion of that. You'll see that we have two resources of revenues for state funds. You have a state funds category that's all state funds, then you have a state textbook revenue source, and that's the same, $59,655,620. Section 3 and 4, before I go any further, let you know that that is roughly about an $835,000 increase from last year, our ending budget last year for state funds. Section 3 and 4, excuse me, is your local current expense, which is your funding from your county commissioners. You'll see the breakdown of 5,000, 6,000, 7,000, and 8,000 categories. The budget is $12,185,000 from the county commissioners. And Section 4 is how that will be, the revenue sources, with the Teacher Supplement Grant actually going up just a small amount, a little over $10,000 from the previous year, the rest of it being in just global local current expense fund. That's roughly about a $320,793,000 increase above last year, ending revenue from local current expense. If you turn to Page 2, Section 5 and Section 6 is your federal grants funds. You'll see that is a big chunk of money. That has a lot of your ESER funds that we have received last year and this year in those totals. You'll see Section 5 is the actual expense part of it, which totals roughly $27,669,894, which is roughly, and of course, Section 6 is the revenue, and you'll see the breakdowns of the different programs in our federal funds, grants. That is roughly a $20 million increase over what we received or what we got as of June 30th of '21. Page 3, Section 7 and Section 8 is your Child Nutrition Fund. There is two program areas in Child Nutrition Fund, that's your 7,000, 8,000. 7,000 is pretty much all your funds, 8,000 is the indirect cost for your child nutrition program. Your budget there is $3664,500. That is actually a slight increase of roughly about $180,000 of where we ended last year, June 30th. Section 9 and Section 10 is your Capital Outlay Fund. That's another revenue source from your county commissioners. You'll see the breakdown there. That's our current expense budget is going to be $4268,880. That is roughly $1,919,000 more than what we ended June 30th, 2021. On Page 4 is your Fund 8 or Special Revenue Fund. Some school systems even call it Other Pacific Revenue Funds. That's pretty much your grant funds. That doesn't fall in the category of Fund 2 or Fund 3 or Fund 1. Some examples of that is our Restore Grant, our ROTC Grant, our TQP Grant, our NC Pre-K Grant. Those are some of the resources that we have there. That grant is, the totals there is roughly $707,957, and that is up roughly about $159,000 more than what was at June 30th last year. So our total overall increase in our budget that I'm presenting tonight from June 30th of 2021 is $23,160,693, and majority of that is going to be under your federal grants, because of your ESER funds that come down from the feds and the state. Any questions from that? And Page 5 pretty much goes over Section 13 and 14, and 15, pretty much goes over what as a board y'all allow access for your superintendent to approve. Most of your boards approve roughly about a 10% budget amendment that the superintendent can approve between areas. So that, for example, if you have a, need to be, if you need a budget amendment between your 5,000 and 6,000 program categories, if it's less than 10%, the superintendent has rights for that. But as we would discuss yesterday in the Finance Committee, myself, as well as Dr. Dennis, both feel comfortable that we need to bring budget amendments to the full board at any time that we need to make those adjustments. Do you have any questions? Yes, sir?
All these ESER funds you're talking about, it looks like a gigantic number, but those things are very narrow of what we can do with.
Yes, sir.
I'm like, if we get into the school system, if we can do whatever we want to, as have other people that have been on boards, federal funds are very narrow.
Very limited. That is very limited of what you can do. Exactly. Yes, sir.
Just a quick comment as a follow-up to our Finance Committee meeting yesterday. What we did discuss among a number of different things, and I would encourage folks, if you get a chance, that's probably, you know, one of the most critical committees that you could attend, because everything happens... could attend, because everything happens in the committee. It gets brought here, people vote on stuff that's discussed in the committee, and there isn't time to go into a lot of detail in a meeting like this with all the different things that could discuss in a Finance Committee meeting. But one of the things I wanted to point out, piggybacking on what Dr. Lefler said about the ESER funds, one of the things that we discussed was doing a more line item breakdown of all of the funds. Mr. Dudney did that. He started out doing that when he came to Stanley County, and then, of course, you know, it's, him and his team have been overwhelmed dealing with a lot of different things, and it's difficult. It takes a lot of time to do that. But we did talk about providing more detail into those things, so that way you don't have to take anybody's word for it. A lot of that information can be gleaned from the federal government itself when those funds are distributed, but sometimes it's difficult to weed through, so we'll try to simplify that stuff for folks as well. And that in the context of the community outreach and giving folks more information and into what's happening behind the scenes. So I just wanted to share that. Thanks.
Thank you. So I believe that you need the board to take action on this. We need to approve the budget resolution for the 2021-2022 school year. Okay, board members, could I have a motion to approve the budget resolution for 2021-2022?
I'll make a motion to approve the budget.
Okay, made a motion by Mr. List. I got a second.
Second.
Okay, second by both Mr. Sorenson and Ms. Poplin. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. That motion carries.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Dudney, and thank you too for all that you do.
Madam Chair, can I just make one quick comment? Because I was gonna, if we had a discussion, I was just gonna mention this. That we just voted on was the 21-22, the current budget. As was noted earlier, yeah, we just were able to do that. We were operating off the previous year's budget. That is not next year's budget, which we are in the midst of having meetings about. So I don't want you to think that our budget discussions are over. That was just finalizing last year's budget. We have a whole bunch of stuff to discuss for next year's budget. Thanks.
Next on the agenda, Superintendent Comments.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Madam Chair. It's been a long day, so I'll be brief. Was gonna congratulate one more time BJ Hill and his family. Went to Oakboro School at the West Stanley. Both schools obviously have a special place in my heart and just all of his accomplishments. I watched him at NC State, outstanding athlete and outstanding young man, and just wishing him and his team the best. CTE Month, you know, we, every February, we say it's CTE Month, and you know, and we talk about how great the CTE programs are. And I guess maybe, you know, my wife was a CTE teacher for a while, and it has a special place in my heart, but CTE classes mean a lot to a lot of kids who don't go through, you know, what may be your normal, what you would expect, you know, I'm gonna go to these classes, I'm gonna go to this college, do whatever. I mean, they teach our kids a lot of skills, even those who don't necessarily complete tracks, they can still learn skills in school, and, you know, things that, you know, they won't be able to learn otherwise. And I think, you know, if you see the CTE teachers and, you know, all the different things that they do, I mean, you know, just stop and thank them. I know I'm always amazed at some of the things they do in their classes, they're highly technical, and just always impressed with our CTE teachers. Again, I don't want to overstate it, but I think I need to, that all of our staff classified and certified that pitched in these other, these past weeks when we were just so shorthanded, and we were trying to keep the kids in school, and I know it was a strain on them. I know they did it because they love children, and they want children to be in school. And again, I can't thank them enough for everything they did and all their hard work. So I want to say that one more time. And also to our healthcare workers and our nurses, and Beverly Pennington and her whole department, bringing the test to stay onboard in the way they did, and to be able to actually conduct the program, you know, the way they have thus far is extremely impressive. It's a pretty big undertaking when you're looking at a school system of maybe 300 students. And so I was just really impressed with their hard work, and I know, just like I was talking about earlier, the classified and certified, our healthcare staff, they do a lot of work, and it's not just a nine-to-five job for them. They're always working to keep our kids in school. And again, I can't thank them enough, and all right, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Dennis. Board members, I'm gonna ask you to keep it a little brief here. We've had a long day, but board member comments are now. I will start with Mr. Sorenson.
Thank you. I turned it off. That was really good. I won't be brief. I'll try to be.
Okay.
I don't know how many of you folks watched the game when BJ Hill made that tip pick, basically a tip interception. It was magic. That was just the coolest thing. The next commercial break, I went back and replayed it three or four times, and couldn't help but feel like that's NFL magic out there on the field. But it's also NC State magic, because that's where he played football in D1 College. It's also West Stanley magic. I talk a lot about the magic we got at South. You cannot, you just can't imagine all that, you know, the things that he learned and picked up on his way. Of course, BJ Hill is what he is because he's BJ Hill. But the reality is, all of us, when we reach a point in our life where we plateau, there's been a thousand little voices along the way. So his family and his coaches, even at the West Stanley level up, they're part of that. They're part of that magic moment. So I just want to point that out. And there's some other magic going on. Mandy, I'm gonna, you might get mad at me. I'm gonna take a couple moments to talk about CTE. Most people don't realize how important, how crucial it is, but basically, 54% of North Carolina jobs today require more than a high school degree but less than a four-year college. They're talking about our CTE programs and community colleges, 54%. 541,806 program completers last year, CTE programs in North Carolina. It's a huge number considering COVID shut a lot of schools down, killed programs. 100, there's 541 secondary, 112,000 post-secondary. Here's what's important, and I want people to hear this and understand this. About 80% of your prison population are high school dropouts. What has CTE got to do with it? The graduation rate in North Carolina for CTE program completers is 99.2%. The average is 86%. CTE works not just getting these kids ready to go do the job, but it keeps them on track to do something with their lives. Finally, I know you couldn't point them out, but we had some serious superstars of CTE standing in front of us. We had one that taught a Skills USA state champion last year. Even though the CTSOs were limited, they still did have some competitions. We had a NCCAT finalist, CTE Teacher of the Year, and I'm telling you right now, we've got the best CTE people in the state. Keep saying that bad words. I'm tired, but we have the best CTE people in the world. The magic that we saw BJ Hill accomplish is about that much due to West Stanley High School. Anybody that would argue that, we'll argue all night. That same magic happens with our CTE people. I can list, right now, off the top of my head, a CTE South Stanley program completer that just retired from the Air Force. He's been flying fighter jets for 20 years. Think about that. He didn't learn how to fly fighter jets in Sorenson's electronics class, but he learned a little, a little bit about himself and what he could do. We have, I have several former engineers. I'm just bragging on South Stanley, but West Stanley's the same thing or worse, North Stanley, same or worse. That's an engineer for Google. He lives out in San Francisco, making kinds of money that we'd have to work, all of us together have to pitch in. Got another PhD. These are all people that are using just a little bit of the magic that started in Stanley County schools to make their lives. So Graves talked about it a few minutes ago. It's time to stop the nonsense. It's time for our General Assembly to pass and fund Leandro. It's time for our General Assembly to adjust our freaking calendar so that we can get our kids through the school before the, I mean, exams before the first year. It's time to stop taking our education system for granted. I personally have watched, for the last 30 years, society's lowering and lowering and lowering its value over our schools while our teachers and our staffs are working 10 times harder to keep it working. The magic only exists if we buy in and support our schools. BJ, I'm a Bengals fan all of a sudden for the first time in 20 years, but I'm also a fighter, Air Force fighter jet pilot, retiring fan. I'm also the PhD that's working for DuPont designing IC chips. That magic has got to keep going. We have to wake up. We have to wake up our assembly. We have to wake up our community. Our kids are doing amazing things because we have amazing teachers. And I apologize for not being brief, but Graves got me on a roll, and I said freaking again, even though I said I wouldn't.
I thought you were pretty, you're pretty brief there. Okay, Mr. Sorenson. Ms. Watson.
I want to pee back on him. He's talking about CTE. I don't think a lot of parents know how many we have. And I know we have at least 80 different, is that correct, Ms. Melton? We have 80 different things that they can do. CTE is really important. We went to a conference, this was not last year, but the year before, I think it was, in Charlotte, and I went to a, into a STEM program that they were doing, and the lady told us before we left, she said, "I want to tell you that a lot of our students that don't go to college or decide they don't want to, but they go to a community college, somewhere like that, that they can come out making more money than anyone going to a four-year college." And she said, "I'll give you an example," and she said, "X-ray, there are X-ray technicians. They're coming out from that program at making $150,000 a year, right out of school." So that, to me, shows you that our CTE programs are very, very important. Again, BJ Hill, it's wonderful that we have a student from here that's, that's going to the Super Bowl. I just can't believe it. It's, it's hard to believe. You know, it really is. But I want to thank all of our people that you work so hard. Our county staff is working so hard, Dr. Dennis is. Everybody in the county office is working really hard with all this COVID stuff going on. And I do thank you teachers for all the, I know it's a lot of stress and all, but thank you, thank you, thank you for what you do for our students. Thank you.
Ms. Poplin.
Well, I'm just gonna have to take a moment to, I've got several things on my list here, so sorry. I do want to start out with thanking Ms. Melton and the CTE group that was here. I truly appreciated the dinner for a change. I didn't have to decide what I was gonna make before I came to a board meeting tonight. So for a mom, that was a nice reprieve. But I do appreciate everything that you guys do, and it was nice to see all the faces here tonight, and to be able to congratulate them on everything you guys are offering for our students. And I just to second everything they're saying. These kids work hard to get their certificates and their certifications and to go on, and that's just a wonderful program, and I'm so excited that we have it, and I enjoy my I have always been a Panther fan, but I think I'm gonna have to be cheering for the Bengals here in the next few weeks. I think the entire county will probably bleed a little black and orange here for the, for the next little bit. We're very proud of him and all of his accomplishments, and wish him the best in the Super Bowl. That's so exciting. I also want to thank all the staff that have worked so hard in the last few weeks with the onboarding of the test to stay, and also want to take a moment to thank Andy Lucas and Commissioner Jordan for getting those EMTs organized to help us with that, to alleviate some of our issues with getting all that lined up, and I really appreciate that. Would like to also thank Mr. Ballinger, Ms. Allman, Mr. Phibbs, and Ms. Carlson for speaking tonight. Appreciate your comments and taking the time to sit through our meeting and come and do that. And just want to, just relate to all of our staff from one end of the school to the other. We know that it's been long, hard days, and we appreciate everything that everyone is doing to keep our schools running, so thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm gonna start down with Dr. Lefler.
BJ Hill, I've never met the young man, but I've heard just great things about him. And it's great he's going to the Super Bowl, but what I'm impressed with is, if he had not gotten an education at West Stanley, he would have never had the chance to go to NC State. So he is a miracle of an athlete, but he's also a student. And if he hadn't been a student and hadn't been impressed, somebody hadn't impressed on him the notion that he needed to get his education, he would never be where he is. So I just want to shout out that the education is important, because that's gotten him where he's at, and we're all very proud of him. Also, the CTE is one of the main things I thought about when I came on the board, because I used to think everybody had to have a college education, but we've got to have everybody, the auto mechanics, the plumbers, the electricians, and we've got a real strong group, and we've got some internships and such as that in the community, and I think that's gonna get stronger and stronger, and I'm really pleased about that. Also, I'm very happy that the COVID numbers are going down. Our whole board through this whole ordeal has worked for in-person learning. The test to stay is for in-person learning. The result of that might be that they'll get the results of that and say, "We don't need to quarantine asymptomatic people." I will be overjoyed with that. But until then, that is the best way we have to keep our students in school. And also, every county, every school board in this state is doing the same quarantining policy we are.
Union County is not.
Joint resolution.
Yeah, Union County absolutely is not, and they beg for y'all to talk to them.
Union County had a lot more quarantines than we ever had.
Not anymore.
And I'm thankful with everything we've done, and thank you for your support, and thank you for all your comments.
I won't support you at all. Union County begs for y'all to talk.
I'm gonna, sir, I'm gonna ask you to please keep your comments to yourself. Let us make our comments. Thank you.
Just answer that.
Ms. Graves.
Yep, thank you. So there is one big difference, and that is, as Megan Allman rightly pointed out earlier, right now, you have a school board and a county commission, and you have a health department in Union County that's all working together. And in Stanley County, I think we have two of the three. So if y'all can help, help get the third part of that fixed, I think, I think we might be able to do something. But, you know, so BJ Hill, when I moved to North Carolina, I moved to Oakboro, and his father, Bobby, was one of the first individuals I had, had met when I moved here. Always an amazing guy, met his wife, Myra, and then I knew this young guy, BJ, through being in the community and the fire department and seeing him around. And it was funny, because I really think probably the best description for BJ Hill is not football player or pro athlete or successful athlete, Super Bowl football player, but it's role model. And the reason why I say that is because if you've known the Hills and you've known BJ for any amount of time, and any teacher that he's ever had, or coach he's ever had, or any neighbor that they've ever had, would describe him by his hard work and his positive attitude, consistently positive attitude. And I remember when he was drafted by the Giants, I was really excited for the family, not just for him, but for the family. He put the hard work in. If you work hard, you have a great attitude, and you're, and you do the right thing, good things are gonna happen to you. And so he was, he was, he was drafted, signed by the New York Giants. And so I go out and get a Giants uniform. So when I found out he was getting traded, I was upset, because that jersey, not a whole uniform, I just bought a jersey. I was upset because that jersey was expensive, and I had, I didn't get shoulder pads either. So, but here's the interesting thing. He was, he was, when he was traded, I watched his press conference, and I would encourage y'all to go back tonight, to go to YouTube and search for BJ Hill Bengals Press Conference. And the way he handled it, because he literally found out, like, in 24 hours, he was on a plane to Cincinnati, leaving his friends that he had made in New York, leaving his life, and literally overnight, having to change and shift, positive attitude, said he was gonna work hard. They're like, "Well, what do you bring to this?" And he's like, "Hard work, and I'll play any position. I'll do whatever they ask me to do." He was reunited with his roommate from NC State, and he's going to the Super Bowl. And so not only is he a role model, he's an inspiration to me, to remind me that, you know, just because something happens that may look temporarily like, you know, a backward move, it- know, a backward move, it, it's always, it could be setting you up for something even better. And so in his case, I think he would agree that he's glad he's no longer a New York Giant, but that he is a Cincinnati Bengal because he's going to the Super Bowl. If he was a Giant, he'd be watching the Super Bowl like the rest of us in a living room. So um, so I just wanted to mention that. I'm, I'm so happy for him. It could not happen to a better young man. Um, I want to thank the speakers, uh, Josh Ballinger, Joshua, or Josh. Um, you're absolutely right, and I would encourage you to come to the finance committee meetings, um, because I think your eyes will be opened very widely. We actually talked about this yesterday. This is one of the examples, the substitute teachers, where the state is, is letting down all of the counties. Um, and there's a whole bunch that we can get into, but you're absolutely right. And I could tell you that the, this school board, along with Mr. Duddy, the superintendent, are working very hard to figure out ways that we can, we can help all of the staff, including the substitutes, the bus drivers, the child nutrition workers. It's critical. It's very hard. And it reminded me of, I don't know how, some of y'all that are younger won't remember this, but there was a Mickey Mouse cartoon, uh, and I think it was called The Cratchits, where Mickey Mouse is slicing a bean. Y'all remember that? For those of you that are over 40, slicing a bean for dinner. And that's what Stanley County schools and most of the school systems in the state are having to do, is sit there and slice a bean, trying to make do. And um, and it's not enough. It's not good enough. And we should not be satisfied. And nobody on, up here is satisfied, and I know nobody sitting out there is satisfied. So I want to thank you, Megan Allman, thank you so much. Jason Fibbs, absolutely right. Um, and I think we need to, we have, uh, we just passed a resolution about the um, calendar. I absolutely think we need to pass a resolution about um, not having our schools used or any of our uh, uh, resources um, for the vaccinations. That is a private matter. It is a medical matter between families and their physicians, and the school system doesn't need to be involved in it, in my opinion. And last but not, well, second to last, um, and that is Heather Carlson, thank you for your comments as well. Um, I want to thank Ms. Carla Poplin for accepting the nomination to the NCSBA Legislative Committee because it is a huge responsibility. Um, and uh, also, Chairman Gibson did it for a number of years, even when Patty was on the board. Um, and it was, it's, it's a huge responsibility and it's our opportunity for our representative to go to the state and speak to other school systems and also to our legislators to um, to have our voice heard. So it's another way our voice can be heard. So I'm glad that she's gonna be doing that for us. And um, and that's it. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Graves. Mr. Lisk.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would echo the sentiments for Mr. BJ Hill and Oakboro and Stanley County. Congratulations. But what I'd really like to get to is, on January the 11th, we had a work session to discuss all of the COVID protocols. How are we gonna handle it? What we're gonna do? What are the legal requirements? What are other health directors doing? It was a very good meeting. I think everyone, uh, Dr. Dennis, his staff, uh, everyone here was at that meeting, uh, including uh, two commissioners, uh, Mr. Chairman Jordan and Lane Ferrer, uh, as well as our health director, David Jenkins. Part of what we discussed were the legal requirements of the schools. So there's several general statutes that have been around for decades on communicable disease law. And what it states is four things: quarantines, isolation, exclusion, and contact tracing. Schools by general statute have to comply with the guidance of the Health Department. I myself, right here, three-page document. You can Google it, research it, call your, hey, it's the general statutes. I didn't make it up, but every board member signed an oath of office to uphold the Constitution and uphold the law.
It's not constitutional.
It's a general statute, as I mentioned before. I would urge you to look up the three-pager and review the general statutes. I also spoke with Dennis Joyner and multiple administrators in Union County. Dennis Joyner's the local health director of Union County. I've known him for a very long time. What we discussed is the protocols that they were doing. So late last summer, when the board in Union County, the school board, made a resolution to send it, all this stuff back to the Health Department, they tried that for a few weeks, month or so.
Months.
No, not months.
Yeah, months.
No, not months.
Two months.
Happy. Oh, two months? Okay, two months. They tried it for two months. We'll go with two months. But it was unsustainable and not feasible. Since then, until today, the school nurses in Union County quarantine.
They do not.
They do not.
No contact tracing.
Okay.
Okay, Lisk.
Their students is not doing contact tracing anymore.
Well, you can continue to believe that, Mrs. Allman. That's okay. Uh, that's, that's, that's just a fact. That's just the facts, and, and that's okay. You, you're welcome to believe whatever you want to believe. But you can read the general statutes. My wife works in Union County. I know, I know you don't care, and I'm not worried about that. But here's the deal. This board is going to follow the law.
The law, the law.
That's exactly right. The general statutes. The board is going to follow the general statutes. I can't speak for everyone.
We're asking the board to actually fight the, the students.
Okay, listen, please, please, please be respectful. Let us have our comments. I, I think, please, please just let us make our comments, or we will not be able to finish. Mr. Lisk.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I'm gonna finish that piece with, there are legal requirements that the school must follow. I don't agree with those laws, and I don't agree with the statutes, and I don't agree with the guidance, but I'm gonna vote to follow those laws. The second thing, test to stay option. Test to stay option is an opt-in program. You have freedom of choice in that program. You don't have to do it.
It was fine, dude.
6,000 students were quarantined from August to December. How many of them were symptomatic? Roughly half of those chose to test. 2,000 tested negative, 1,000 tested positive, 3,000 didn't test. So that was 50%. But just as other people have their freedom.
Hold on a second. Um, Mr. Lisk and I um, sometimes disagree. But listen, um, hold on, hold on one second. There's a public comment section, and then the board members get to speak. And if that isn't respected, then that's gonna limit involvement in future meetings. So afterwards, we can have conversations, people can post comments online, we can have discussions. I want everybody to be able to participate. Um, so just please let him finish his comments, and if y'all would like to talk afterwards with any of the board members, then you're feel, you know, feel free to approach us after the, the meeting, okay? Please, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Graves. So test to stay is an optional program that this board voted on. And at, to date, in the short time we've had it, 100% of our teachers and staff and administrators have chosen to take that test, to stay, and 80% of the students. If you don't want to, you don't have to. That's your option. But as I think Mr. Graves mentioned, or someone else on this board mentioned before, we're looking for options within the guidance to keep kids in school, committed to in-person learning, and to help our teachers, staff, and administrators. We have to keep the, the schools open. I'm just gonna finish this comment section with thanking Beverly Pennington, Mr. Duddy, Dr. Amy Blake Lewis, Dr. Khan, Mrs. Melton, Dr. Dennis, and all of his staff, the teachers, all of the staff in the schools, all employees for what they're going through. It's been really hard on them, and this board hears you. This board is working hard to take care of the students, our people, the parents, families, and our stakeholders in this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lisk. I would just um, take a few minutes here. Once again, thank you, board members, um, for the time that we spent together in our work session. Thank you for the food. Um, it was great. Ms. Mandy Melton, thank you for all you do. And um, all of our central office staff, everyone, thank you. And um, for Dr. Dennis. It is great and it was fun tonight. I had a fun moment um, at the beginning. And so I, even though we may not be Cincinnati Bengal fans, I think we are, at least for the next couple of weeks. Whether we went to North Stanley, West Stanley, South Stanley, Albemarle, whatever, I, I hope we end up painting, painting Stanley County orange and black. Um, also, there's a young girl that um, she plays for Albemarle, Amari Baldwin, that she um, was recognized, or she won the Charlotte Observer Player of the Week. I know you got to vote, you got to vote a whole lot of times, and I told Dr. Dennis, I don't think he believed me. And I told Coach Eric Davis, I said, "I voted for her 380 times." I do not sleep sometimes well at night, and I mean, I was just voting, and then you'd have to refresh it, and I'd vote, refresh, vote, refresh, vote. So, and it was making me so mad because, I mean, every couple hours, that next girl that was second, she'd jump ahead, and I was like, "Well, doggone, I'm gonna keep voting." So I, I don't think I slept one night because I voted 384 times for her. And I'm just so glad that she won that. Um, and you know what, Dr. Dennis? Now, I know you were a football player at West Stanley High School. Okay? My husband talks about, okay, you. But I don't know how many of you, I know that I'm a lot older than most of you in here. I, I look around and I can tell that, but you don't have to remind me of it. But when I wa, when I went to school at West Stanley High School, we had a great player too. His name was Rod Broadway. And I don't know how many of you out there recognize that name, but I remember how excited we were as students that Rod went on a football scholarship to Carolina. Then I think he played in the NFL for a little while. He got injured. And what a great coach he has been in several of um, our great black institutions. He won, was it NC A&amp;T or Central?
He was at A&amp;T.
A&amp;T. So, you know, I think back to that as well and how, how excited we were um, about that. And then we talk about the last time, Mr. Sorensen, about our time in the cafeteria working.
Well, you know, we did not, and that was, that was on my agenda. I would never do that.
Well, I just want to say.
I didn't mind it.
Okay, I went out, I was at Indy, and I worked in the cafeteria, and what an experience. And I, I mean, I enjoyed, I did some, some of the custodial work as well. Um, and, you know, then I think we had maybe a work day or something, and I saw that the staff was saying, "We're cleaning, we're cleaning." And, and the whole time I was out there, I was, I mean, you can about eat off the floor. I thought, "What are they cleaning?" You know, because it was, they just do so well. But I have to tell you this story before I end, and I hope you'll get a chuckle out of this. I have a little grandson who's in kindergarten at Indy, and he was thrilled that day to see me. And it took him a while to realize I had that hairnet on, because I think he realized some, something doesn't look right about your hair. And um, I had to go speak to him when he came through the lunch line, and then I took him home when I was leaving. And he said, and he told his mother, "I think that that Indy Red Hawk should hire my Gigi to work in the cafeteria all the time." And I was busted out laughing. I said, "What do you mean the Indy Red Hawk?" He said, "That Indy Red Hawk does the hiring. That's who you have to talk to, is that Indy Red Hawk." And, and so, it's so funny what little children, you know, what's in their mind about, I guess, who employs you or the hiring process, but we did have a good, I mean, I was glad we got that experience, um, Mr. Sorensen and Dr. Lefler, Ms. Poplin, and also. Our next board meeting is Tuesday, March the 1st, at 7:00 PM here in the Jean McIntyre Room. We do not need to go back into closed session. That's next on our agenda. So finally, for tonight, you are so patient. Um, Dr. Keisha Kong, you are up with um, our agenda for the Personnel Administration and Student Services.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board. I'd like to draw your attention to the updated personnel agenda that was at your seat, additions that were added since you received your packet wearing red. Section 1 requires no action, but Section 2 does require action.
Hey, board members, I would like to have a motion to approve Section 2.
Make a motion to approve Section 2.
Motion by Mr. Graves, I need a second. Second by Ms. Poplin, all in favor say aye. Those opposed, no. Okay, that motion has carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for all you do. Once again, thank you for being in attendance. Thank you, board members, Dr. Dennis, our central office staff. And finally, once again, go BJ Hill and those Cincinnati Bengals. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Motion by Mr. Graves, a second. Second by Ms. Watson, all in favor say aye. Our meeting is adjourned. Thank you.